Yeah, she's gonna stand there and.
Oh, okay.
People coming in.
Okay.
Yep. So I'm gonna call the meeting of the Watertown Board of Library Trustees to order. We'll start with what we're, we're gonna skip ahead on the agenda to new business, the library trustee interviews. So we'll get right on with that and we have some, you know, about seven questions to applicant. What I was conditioning was each of us would give a question. And so.
We do the same one for each person or we skip around?
I'm thinking the same one for each person.
Okay.
We'll get in a real group that way.
Yep.
So I can start and then do you wanna just?
I have a procedural question.
Sure.
After that round of questions, can we ask other questions?
Yes. I mean, if we, if time allows.
I think we wanna keep it within the fifteen minutes.
I know, but if, well, I would say that it would be fair. If you're asking the same questions to everybody that you ask the same, you be consistent. But if you're trying to get a sense of who a person is and there's a question.
I mean, what, let's see, questions. Maybe a chance for some back and forth, but I think we should stick to the, the list of questions that we have because we're, we're, we do have limited time.
Are you thinking about clarifying questions or just questions related to their resume?
Questions.
Yeah, okay.
Do we wanna just stick to the, the questions listed here and not have any back and forth?
I would just stay with the questions.
Stay with the questions.
You know, just because we're in a time constraint.
Yeah.
Just in case.
Yeah.
Okay. So do you wanna just go around the room? Daniel, you asked the first question, Chef the second, the third, I'll take the fourth. Fifth.
Chef, yeah, you can take the long one.
Yeah.
Complex.
Yes, yeah, and, and that would be me with the seventh question.
Keep me out.
Okay, all right, okay, I'll come back to, to do the last question then. Does that work?
Sure.
Okay. So I guess we can start with the first candidate.
Okay.
See you later over here.
Sure.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate this.
Thank you for coming, thank you for applying. We're excited to have other great applicants. Thank you, welcome. My name's Renee, I'm chair of the library trustees. So we're very excited.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you use the library?
Okay, all the time, but I also use, well, I, in general, I use libraries, I go into libraries, but I also do a lot of work on databases, so, so I use those as well. And I've been in, in Watertown for two years. I take books out of the library, I read magazines here, I brought my grandson to play with the puzzles. And, and I've also gotten on Canopy, is it? Yeah, so I've done, I've done those kinds of things, yeah. And I'm, you know, I'm a, an English professor, so you can't keep me out of libraries, you know? It's, it's part of what I do.
Thank you so much.
And what in your work experience would you bring to the board of library trustees?
Well, I, I have a real interest in multicultural literature, both for adults as well as children. In fact, I was a reader on a book, Donna Norton's book on multicultural children, an anthology that came out. So I do, I do those kinds of things. But also, when I, I moved here two years ago and I was a professor in Virginia, I ran a civic engagement center. So I was really interested in having interaction between the public and, and universities. That's, that's something, an outreach, trying, trying to make sure that you could do outreach. I, the other thing that I could bring to the board is, as the director of civic engagement, I also taught a class in civic engagement, which, which was a class to train people on how to write grants. I, I did public relations for nonprofits and grants. So if you were interested in applying for something, I would be happy to lend my expertise in that.
Could you please describe any contacts around the community or any other involvement that you've had in the community?
Sure. I'm on the Watertown Cultural Council and I, that's been a really good experience for me, not only in meeting people on the council, but also really getting to know the nonprofits in the area. And we just did a grant go around and so I'm, I'm in charge of watching programs at Gore Place and Mount Auburn Cemetery and the Flat Earth Theater. And, and since I have background in arts programming, I really enjoy that. I've also seen as, working on the Watertown Cultural Council, people applying to do programming at the library, which I think is, is great because this is a venue where a, a person who might not be at the Huntington or might not go other places, this is, is going to be a welcoming place for them to hear music or to see a performance.
Later this year, the trustees will be approving a five-year strategic plan for the library. We do this every five years and as part of that process, we'll be meeting every Wednesday with members of the community, community representatives, some members of the staff here, administrators of the library, and we'll be reviewing survey results, discussing goals, and outlining a strategic plan. I just wanted to make sure that you'd be able to make those meetings on a Wednesday evening, so that's much.
Sure.
And also wanted to see what, how you could lend your voice and skill set to the process of strategic planning.
Yeah. As I said, I did teach a class in writing for civic engagement and I also did the internship program where we put people out into the community to work as a consultant with nonprofits. So I've, I've taught people how to do strategic plans, mainly probably more communications plans, but I'm very comfortable with budgets. I've done large budgets for government grants and so, yeah, I know how to do that. Even though I have not taken any math since the eleventh grade. I always told students that because a lot of the students in the civic engagement program were humanities students and they'd say, no, 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 I can't do it, I can't do a budget. I'd say, the last time I took math was the eleventh grade. If I can do it, you can do it.
Excellent. Roberta, what do you see as the mission of the public library?
Well, I think probably the, the old mission, Benjamin Franklin's mission, was probably to provide books, but I see the library now as a real community hub for all kinds of interaction. You know, of course, books and everything that's online, but I was really impressed when I, when I first moved here and I looked at all the things that your library does. I mean, the, the programming for immigrants and the arts programming and the children's programming, it's, it's really impressive. And, and I, I think that a library needs to do that. It, it's going to be that sort of place for people who might be very intimidated to go other places.
Thank you.
How would you advocate for the library beyond attending the monthly meetings of the trustees?
Well, I know a lot about public relations, so I, I don't know how you all do the interaction with government agencies or with the media, but I would certainly do that and with organizations that I belong to. I haven't been here long, but I have a lot of energy and, and I've gotten really involved in, in Boston in a very short time. So, you know, I, I would be helpful in any way that you needed me to be, whether it was to do, to, you know, assist with press releases or to talk to people about becoming board members or any, any of those things.
And if appointed, would you consider running for library trustee in the next election, which would be coming up in November two thousand twenty-one?
I have to be honest with you, I didn't realize until today, when I started doing some research, I thought this was sort of like the Watertown Council, you know, where someone met you and thought this was going to work and appointed you. And so I said to my husband, I'm gonna have to run if that happens. It, it, it actually sounds like fun and, and because right now, I'm, I am working with the Watertown Council and I do teach at the Harvard Institute for Learning and Retirement, but I really have a good deal of time and, and lots of energy and so, yeah.
Well, you'd be thinking about it in twenty twenty-one, around May, getting some signatures and getting on the ballot.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be the timeline, but it was.
I've, I've always worked for other candidates, but, you know, because I've been part of the political process in that way, but I've never, I've never put myself forward, so.
It was my first time.
Yeah.
And I came from an appointment, so. Yeah, it was going outside of my comfort zone, but definitely a rewarding process.
Yeah, yeah, the first time I knocked on doors, you know, in Virginia for a presidential candidate, it was like, am I gonna be able to do this? You know, but yeah, yeah, I did, so.
Okay, well, that's all our questions. If you have any questions for us, please do let us know. And we will be doing another round of interviews coming up in a couple of weeks and so we should be letting people know after that.
Oh, okay, so it, it will be some time before.
Yes.
Yeah.
We had quite a few applicants, so we wanted to be everybody.
You, you did a very good job of putting out the word. Yeah.
It's good to know.
Yeah, because I, I did, I, I saw it all over. I thought, okay, and, you know, just because I taught public relations and in, in public relations, they say that you don't see something until you've seen it seven times.
Yes.
I thought, I've definitely seen it seven times, yeah. Well, thank you very much. And if you have any other questions, you know, feel free to get in touch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Number two is not here yet.
Oh.
Okay. We started a little sooner than.
Assuming it's not number three either, right?
No, nobody else.
Did everybody respond, but the times worked?
Yeah, like I said, I had to do a couple of adjustments, but, yeah. How you doing, Mark?
A little crazy, but good. I gotta do the same thing for Jagger, permission interview, but I gotta do that by myself. So I'm a little.
Did you get a good response?
Not as good as I would have liked, but we got some more people after we announced it again. It's not get people from that other people know.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a long process.
I, I will say that we are probably gonna look at this board as being a working board. I don't know if it'll pass, but I think that, given, we've done this a few times.
Yeah.
Hello?
Hi, great to meet you, Eric. I'm Leanne.
Hi, Erica.
Hi, Michael, nice to meet you.
Pleasure.
Teddy, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you. Hello?
Hi.
Daniel.
Hi, nice to meet you, Daniel.
Shepherd.
Shepherd, nice to meet you.
Hi, Mark.
Hi, Mark, nice to meet you.
And we all call, I'm the director. Nice to meet you.
So Eric, could you tell me how to pronounce your last name?
Patouane.
Patouane.
Correct.
So I just wanted to start by asking you how you use the library printing.
So I moved here recently, so I've only been here a few times. I've come pretty often to use the printer and use the computer services and I recently started rereading the Harry Potter series and I'm only on the second book, so. Moved here in July twenty nineteen, so I've been here maybe once a month.
Wanna go ahead, Chef?
What would your work experience, you think, bring to the board of the trustees?
So I don't know if anyone has a financial background or a tax background or an accounting background, but I'm, I'm the tax manager at a wealth management firm. But I started my career at Press Waterhouse Groupers, so I have a fairly broad range of experience, whether that's trust and estates, gifts, charitable planning, as well as reviewing prep foundation returns and public charity returns. I don't know if this organization is a nonprofit or governmental organization, but if you did file tax returns, I would bring that to the table. As well as just financial planning for organizations and individuals. So I'm not sure if you guys have a long range financial plan, short-term cash flow planning or things like that, but I would assist with that as well.
Could you please describe your contacts and involvement in the community?
So I moved here in twenty thirteen to the greater Boston area to go to Northeastern University. Since then, I haven't been very active volunteering, but prior to that in Maine, I'm from Maine, small town in Maine, and I was, yeah, I was the president of the interact club in high school. That was a while ago, actually. But I don't know if anyone is aware of Press Waterhouse Groupers, but it took up majority of my waking hours for many years. But now that I have a new job, I'm looking to get more involved again.
One other question about later, this is my grew up here, actually. Later this year, the trustees will be approving a five-year strategic plan for the library and the strategic planning committee will consist of the trustees, several community representatives, library administrators and staff, and we'll be meeting on the third Wednesday each month to discuss survey results, goals, outline a strategic plan. I wanted to make sure that if you're appointed to the board, would you be able to make a Wednesday evening meeting? And what would you bring to the table as far as your voice and your skill set in strategic planning?
Yes, so the regular meeting is Tuesday evening and you always have a second one every week, Wednesday evening?
We have one Tuesday meeting at the beginning, the first Tuesday of the month, and then during the strategic planning process, we'll, in addition to that, have a Wednesday, third Wednesday meeting on the seventh.
Yeah, that's really fine, obviously, tax season gets in the way a little bit, but I would work around that. And my, my new company's been very vocal, being positive towards these kinds of things, so they would definitely be willing to, let me leave early on, a couple of days to participate on the board. For as much as what I would bring is strategic planning, I mean, when I first came here, I walked in just blown away by the library and it's fairly new, I'm assuming. When was it built or renovated?
Two thousand and six.
Okay, it's pretty new. What I would bring is, I'm, again, for the financials, making, making sure things make sense. I'm sure you guys have someone actually dedicated to doing that, but just high level, does this financial situation make sense? Is it, are we, is the budget gonna work or is it just a clav piece? We're gonna have to fix it in a couple of years or it's just doesn't make sense?
Eric, can you tell me how you would advocate for the library beyond the monthly meetings of trustees?
I would, well, I don't know what you guys do now, I'm assuming you guys are all actively coming to the library and participating in meeting the, meeting the patrons and stuff like that.
Yes.
I mean, I would look forward to that, obviously. I came here last weekend or two weeks ago to use a computer. Next time I come, more than, I'd love to talk to people and get their in-person feedback like that. I don't know if anyone goes to the town or you guys have to go to the town to get approval of those kind of meetings, but I would love to do that as well.
Yes.
What do you see as the mission of the public library?
So I think it's changing. I mean, I definitely talked a lot about the computers and the printers and actually walked, I walked by Hatch on the way here and again Hatch was pretty packed right now on a, was it Tuesday evening? So I think the mission of these type of organizations is changing. I would love to be part of that change. Obviously, periodicals and paper books are gonna stay around, but there's definitely some things to think about going forward with technology and things like that.
Thank you.
If appointed, would you consider running for the library trustee in the next election in November two thousand twenty-one?
That would be my plan, I would love to be, if appointed, I would love to run for reelection.
Have you ever, ever considered running for it before or would this be new?
It's, this is new, I definitely wanted to get involved. I saw, when I first moved here, the ballot was, the last ballot in November, I saw that the libraries were voted in. That definitely piqued my interest right away, so when I saw this opening, I was like, I would love to join in advance of the next election overall.
Okay, well, our process going forward is that we have several other candidates to interview tonight and we'll be doing another round of interviews of another group about two weeks from now. So we'll be letting the candidates that we choose know after that, so just for.
Great.
And I wanna thank you for, for your application and for coming in. Overwhelmed with the amount of interest.
Yes, thank you all for having me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Mark. You skipped over those guys.
I did, I jumped right into the question.
It's pretty.
Welcome him.
Pretty interesting that even when you look through the resumes as well, that all of these people haven't been here too long.
Yeah, yeah, it's all people that are trying to, to get involved, which is great, but.
Actually, when I ran, I think I'd only been here five years this time. My wife raised a family here earlier, so we had that contact. I mean, it's not a prerequisite, but it's, it's interesting that, you know, if you look at all of them, most of the highest percentage was just.
Right.
Yeah.
Less than five years.
Yeah.
Probably a place where people feel, who are longtime residents, feel comfortable in the library.
Yeah, it's a welcome place, yeah.
Yeah.
It could also mean that people really intend to live here.
Yeah.
You know, they, they chosen to move here.
Yeah.
And not to Lincoln, for instance.
Yeah. Yeah, I noticed one of the resumes mentioned, or the cover letter mentioned, you know, the Armenian markets brought her here and then she decided to move to another community, so. Portland.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm looking through those things.
Cool.
Yeah.
Now the, the basketball team's a big deal because almost his name, Taco, plays up there. He's like eight feet tall, so it's a big celebrity.
Yeah, I've heard a lot about him. But haven't been to one of those games yet?
Yeah. Actually heard some of the, some of the rookies actually live in town now because their practice facilities, um, Brighton Landing everywhere that they just train stuff is, so. A friend of mine who's kind of aware of this just stuff told me some of the younger players when they first come here, get some of the newer apartments to be close to that.
It essentially means you draft and you debug and you iterate, you debug, you iterate.
Just like I did Nyalon.
Exactly. That was the beta test.
I think they're still counting, you know?
There was sixty-two percent in last night.
Yeah, last night, yes.
Yeah.
I just asked Dan what Agile was, which is the next.
Uh, yeah.
It's like a.
His app that he's using.
Well, we, we, but our, our web developer uses Agile to, they, they use Agile to build our, our website. It essentially is an iterative process, essentially. And the other ones are like, I think someone else said they were a Scrum.
Scrum, yeah.
Yeah, that's another model of project managing a digital development program.
Does that mean you all hired together?
Yeah, we run into each other, basically. No, it's sort of like, in Scrum, you kind of like mad dashes. So you get like one thing completely done as much as possible and then you move on to the next one. Which is what they shouldn't have done anyway.
So Mark, did you accept the apology last week?
Well, Bill McQuillan asked me for a couple of lines that were in his app, were pertaining to the schools and the population. We had a conversation about it, he was mad. He was pretty hot, that's about a thirty thousand dollar act.
Hmm, wow, I was wondering how much that would have cost him.
I think he told me it was twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Wow.
You know, I, I have a friend who knows him pretty well and I was at a community meeting with him where somebody come out of, you know, hadn't been to any of these meetings and then got up and said, why doesn't anybody ever tell me anything? And he'd, how many meetings, you know? And he was nice to that person. He was very gentle, he let them down. I went up to him afterwards and I said, you're really, you're really nice to this person. And he said, I'm not, it's not my reputation.
It's not.
It's not. And John Erasian from Eastern Clothing put in a letter to the editor, which was on, in the paper as well the same day.
Don't mess with Watertown.
You know, typically, the person writing the article doesn't write the headline.
Right, yeah, yeah, true.
So the editor picked one of the last lines and, and that's what caught everybody's attention.
Yeah. Look great trying to start controversy and stuff like that.
Of course, on a regular basis, one runs into people who are just glad to see all the development go away.
Yep. Where I used to live in Alston, near Hobby Stadium, if you just come across the Osnoe Bridge and as you're approaching Weston Avenue, you see that larger apartment complex. So there's three hundred plus units there. Now, as you drive down the street, right at the Star Market parking lot, it's a low-income elderly housing that probably has two hundred and fifty-plus units. You go across the street onto Sojusville Road, there's a high-rise that's probably close to three hundred units. Where the Alston Cow Wash is, that's gonna duplicate, they're gonna build another complex there. Then, if you read Saturday's Globe, the skating club of Boston, a guy wants to put in five hundred and thirty-five apartment units. And where the hotel is, take down the hotel as well, build another hotel with another couple hundred condo units.
Let the days in.
So if you, if you work backwards from where the skating club is, back to the top of Weston Avenue, there were about twelve houses. There were about twelve houses that were there, I'm gonna say ten or fifteen years ago. And once all that is done, there'll be something like fifteen hundred units.
Yeah.
Even that stop and shop nearby there, there's a big project trying to get approval. They're trying to do a whole redevelopment, similar to what we're doing for the Arsenal Yard Development. We're gonna try to do a mixture of condos and office space and stuff like that.
That's gonna be almost two thousand units.
Yeah.
Do you know that is a stop and shop?
Yeah.
And.
It's not gonna bring the prices down, is it?
No, not at all, not at all. You know, because you're looking at new stock versus old stock. And the old stock is, if you were to buy a single-family home in that part of town. It's between eight hundred and a million. A three-family is fifty, one point five billion. Which is, I think, a little bit more than, you know, parts of certain neighborhoods here in Watertown. But whether it's Alston or Watertown, its location, and you're two minutes to the turnpike, or whatever, you go east and west.
And a lot of the neighboring towns really block housing. But Watertown doesn't, Watertown keeps up. Actually, we're one of the few communities in Greater Boston that has produced housing at the rate at which the Greater Boston population is growing. There was a, I think, Boston Foundation Metro Housing Development.
But, but study.
That was really interesting.
To me, the big saving grace is that there are children here.
Do you want to take the seven thirty-five?
Occupying, climbing, junior high and high school.
Yeah.
Um, seven thirty-five.
The, so Kristen Kenny is here. Okay, Heather Rizzo is not. Do you want to go on water, or do you want?
Let's do that.
Let's go to water, yeah.
All right, I'll bring her in.
So who is it?
Kristen, Kristen.
So we're gonna go around.
Yeah, and I'm gonna start with Daniel.
Thank you.
No need, really.
Well, just for everybody, everyone, you know, active.
Hi. Hello, welcome.
Hi, Kristen Kenny.
Hi. I'm Leanne, I'm here in Portland, so be welcome.
Nice to meet you.
You guys can use it.
I'm a little concerned, interviews don't usually run early.
We don't grill people, we scare people.
We got a little bit of an early start, so.
Great.
Kristen, we're really pleased to receive your application. And I'll jump right in with, how do you use the library? How do you use library currently?
Um, currently?
Sorry.
Take out books. I'm just familiarizing myself with your services. I'd been going to, I work over near Harvard Square, so I was going to the library over there. I thought, well, that's silly. And so now I started coming here. My husband's here all the time, more than I am. But I liked walking around the older parlor building, and I was just admiring the maps. I was sort of a history buff. So, in the past six months, yeah, books, videos. Yeah, but I did notice just today that there's that volunteer service where people can teach classes, Hatch.
Yes.
Yeah, I'd like to get involved in that.
Yeah, to make some things.
Yes, yes, it's great.
All right.
So can you tell us a little bit about how your experience will inform your work here with the board, if you were to be appointed?
Well, I've worked on a lot of boards. And a lot of different kinds of boards. I like solving problems in a group, and, um. Gosh, that's a good question. Why am I always working on boards? That's a better question. It's just seem, I enjoy the library, I really like Watertown. This is just a foray for me to get more involved in a city I've really grown to really love.
What other involvements do you have in Watertown?
Nothing.
Nothing is?
This is my toe.
Simple answer.
Oh, actually, I'm hoping to become helping on the gardening of these three properties in town. And I'm hoping to like get involved in that, if not, space for myself, but maybe teach people a little bit of gardening and that sort of thing.
Later on this year, the trustees are going to be approving a five-year strategic plan for the library. A strategic planning committee that consists of the trustees, several community members, library administrators and staff. Are gonna be meeting on the third Wednesday of each month to review survey results, discuss goals, and outline a strategic plan. If you're appointed to the board, would you be able to attend these meetings on Wednesday evenings as well as the monthly Tuesday meeting? And how would your voice and skill set advance this planning process?
I would be able to attend. My skill set, gosh. Like I said, working with large groups, being able to listen to a lot of opinions at the same time. Trying to figure out what everybody's focus is. And, and hearing everyone's opinions, you know, people get emotional during some, during these things sometimes, and weighing that as well. And then, you know, what are the needs of the library at the same time? It's all about balancing.
And outside of meetings, monthly meetings, how would you advocate for the library beyond attending those meetings?
Any sort of functions that were going on, I'd be more than happy to attend. Outreach programs, I don't know if you go into the local elementary and high schools around here and try to get kids involved. I mean, I'd be interested in that. Again, working with that makers group, that would be a lot of fun, I'd really like that.
Um, let's see, what would you, I'm sorry, what do you see as the mission of the public library?
Educating people. Getting people to use everything that's available as a source for anything from, you know, learning what somebody might want to study in college. To, you know, getting kids involved in, you know, reading programs that'll really stick them into reading for the rest of their lives. It's more than just like something to do and kill time, there's actually activities that are a way to grow for everyone.
Thank you.
If appointed, would you consider running for the library trustee in the next election in November of two thousand and twenty-one?
Twenty-one, boy, um, yeah. I think that's awesome.
Yeah, we're just until getting on the ballot. You have to collect some signatures and, and start that process in May of two thousand and twenty-one. Or we're, maybe knock on some doors.
Yeah.
Sound like a.
That would be great.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for coming, Kristen.
Thank you, how many people are you seeing?
Seeing thirteen.
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 Oh, that's not bad.
Not all today.
Exhausted.
Yeah, speaking of that, we'll be seeing some people in a couple of weeks, so we probably won't be choosing a candidate.
Sure. Well, good luck.
Thank you.
The question I wanted to ask was, she's got a degree in filmmaking and planners. It doesn't look like she's using that at all in her employment. Does she do any of that?
Heather is here.
Hi, Heather.
Welcome, please. My name's Leanne, and I'm one of the trustees here. Sorry, I'm just editing. Here we go. So thank you for submitting an application, we're glad that you're interested in serving on the board. I'm gonna turn it over to Daniel for his question.
Hey, thanks for coming in.
Hi, sure.
Can you tell us a little bit about how you use the library?
How I use the library? Very often. I'm within walking distance, so I definitely come here at least once a week, if not more. I always have a book on my nightstand and an audiobook in my car at all times. So I've definitely gotten a worn-out library card at this point. Which is why I applied for this position, because I love the library, I love it here, and I just wanna help in any way I can.
What do you think in terms of your work experience would you bring to the board here?
Good question, so I'm a project manager by trade, so I deal a lot with process, interacting with a lot of different people. I bring a good set of communication skills, I think, which would all be really useful serving on the board. But mostly, I just like to get stuff done, which is part of my project management background. And I think that would be the most useful skill, because I'm really good at facilitating, you know, working, getting work done any way we can. Which is super important for any board, I think.
Could you please describe some of your involvement in the community, or any contacts in the community?
Sure, well, I'm actually kind of new to Watertown this time around. I just purchased a house last January, so I've only been here about a year. So I'm not super involved in the community yet, but this was, you know, my first kind of step, looking to get more involved.
Thank you.
Later this year, the trustees will be approving a new five-year strategic plan. And for that process, we'll be meeting once a month in addition to our trustees' meeting. That meeting takes place on Wednesday evenings, the third Wednesday of each month. Would that be a meeting that you'd be able to make it to if you were appointed?
Sure, absolutely.
Great, and what, what skill set would you bring to the strategic planning process? Do you think, how would your voice add to the, to the process?
Good question, so in my current role as a project manager, and, you know, for the last eight to ten years or so. I've been involved with a lot of strategic planning, as you can imagine, for all different types of projects, from all different types of companies. I've been at small companies, large companies, so I feel like I've really seen a wide array of planning, planning processes. Especially around strategy, obviously, so I think I'd bring like good planning skills. And I could help facilitate, certainly, certain discussions if we have any disagreements. I think that's where my strengths would lie.
Great, thank you.
What do you see as a mission for public libraries?
Mission for public libraries? I definitely see it as a place of gathering. It's definitely a, a large part of the community and the area. You know, I've, I've met most people in town that I know, just coming through the library. Because people don't really run into each other in the street as much as they used to, I suppose. So at least here, you know, most people are from Watertown. It's a nice place to stop and chat. It can be a good reprieve from your life. You come here, you relax, you see a lot of people studying and stuff like that. So I feel like it's a getaway, as well as like a nice little community interaction.
Good, thank you.
How would you advocate for the library beyond attending monthly meetings of the library trustees?
Sorry, what was the question?
How would you advocate for the library beyond attending the monthly meetings?
Yeah, well, I'm a big fan of community outreach, and that's something I'd certainly love to get involved doing. I'm sure you guys have lots of ideas towards that, and I'd love to help out in that way. I love chatting up the library with everyone I meet anyways, so I think that would be pretty natural. But that's the best thing I can come up with right now. Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
And if appointed, would you consider running for the library trustee in the next election? Which would be, the next time election is in November of two thousand and twenty-one?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah, so it's a four-year term, right? So we're kind of in the middle of it right now?
Well, we're actually, it's at the beginning of a term, but you have to have the election at the next election.
According to the town charter.
Yes.
Right.
You would have to, technically, a couple of people just got elected and they were elected for four years. But the way the charter is set up, because we have a vacancy, you would have to run in the next town election, which would be two years from now.
I see that.
Approximately.
Yeah, I thought it would be the four years, but, okay, that makes sense. But yeah, definitely, it's something I'd definitely commit to long-term. I wouldn't just wanna do a year and call it quits, so, yeah.
Thank you. Well, it was great to meet you, and please let us know if you have other questions. But we're going to be interviewing some other candidates tonight and another round of other candidates in a couple of weeks. So you probably won't hear for another couple of weeks.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.
Great to meet you.
David, pleasure. It's all right.
Yeah.
You've got a lot of stuff to do.
Yeah, exactly.
She was interesting.
Yeah.
Everyone, this is Chris. Hi.
Hi, thanks.
Hey.
Hi.
And Daniel and.
My name is Mark.
Mark. Well, how can I not give some?
I'm not an official member of the board, but.
Okay, well, I guess that's a good reason to not have a sign. Good evening, thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you for submitting an application. We're excited to have some great applicants who remember them.
Thank you.
So it's welcome.
Yeah, sure, so to start, can you tell us a little bit about how you use the library?
Sure, so in all transparency, my usage of the library has been sporadic. I've been a Watertown resident for about fifteen years, but the majority of that time, I was on a plane almost every week because of my job. And I would pop in and out, but it's only been within the last year or so. And honestly, a rekindling for me of, I now have a granddaughter in my life who adores the library. Now, the unfortunate part is that she doesn't live in Watertown. But when they come to visit, that's on the top of the list of what we do. And it reminded me how I feel about libraries, about reading, about books. And I've been looking for a way that I can give back to the community, so that is what has led me to this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
In spite of being on the planet, what in your work experience would you bring to the board of trustees?
That's a great question. I would say that I would focus on three main things that I believe that I could bring to the board. One is an experience of leading teams, but to be an effective leader, you really have to be an influencer. And my suspicion is that the work of the board, albeit there are decisions that are made collectively as a board. Okay, we decide X, and that gets to be implemented, that then it's about stakeholder management. And how do you bring along people within the community to really align with the vision of the library for the community? So number one would be that capability around consensus building. Second is when, I've had the privilege in my career to work on multiple projects that often involved a pretty significant amount of money. And so you have to become efficient and qualified or capable in terms of prioritizing. And I'm sure that there are many projects that need to be, or are desired, you know, within the community for the library. But that takes a judicious eye of, okay, so what are the long-term goals that the board has set? And let's work backwards, and how do we get there? And how can we minimize the distracting noise so that we stay focused on the priorities? You know, to build up the library for the sake of the community. So that's number two. And number three is, I'm not exactly sure how I wanna articulate this. The library, to me, represents many things, but above all, it is kind of the equalizer. And to be able to contribute to maintaining and, and building it in the Watertown community such that it doesn't matter who you are. How much money you make or you don't make. You know, all those things that, that would make me feel really proud, to be able to say that I can contribute to maintaining and improving upon that.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could you describe? Could you describe any other involvement in the community or any contacts you have within the community?
Sure. In terms of the community, because of all that travel, I, you know, I don't have this long list of community activities, and I'll be very forthright about that. In terms of people within the community that I would feel very confident in you reaching out to, Vincent Picarelli was a neighbor we just recently moved two streets away, but as a councilman. And Jocelyn Tager, who is also a town resident, very involved in the solar environmental movement within the community. She's known as Elle, but Eleanor. Panisi has been here for years and years and years, was born and raised on Lowell, and still lives in the community and is a business owner. And Laura Siegel is a friend and also was our realtor, and hung in there with us for a long time until we figured out what we wanted to do. So right off the top of my head, I would feel very confident in you reaching out to those individuals.
Thank you.
Hi, Chris. Later this year, the trustees will be approving a five-year strategic plan for the library. And in order to get there, we need to, we formed a strategic planning committee, of which all of the trustees are serving on it, plus some community members, library staff. And we meet on the third Wednesday each month, and we'll be doing that for another six months or so. I just wanted to make sure that in addition to our Tuesday night meetings at the first of the month, you'd be able to make a Wednesday meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because that's an important role for the trustees coming up in the next few months. And then how do you think your voice and skill set could advance the planning process?
Well, in a little bit in reference to what I mentioned before, the capability to hear multiple things and reduce that down to a very concise delivery is something that I've been told that is a skill of mine. Consensus building I've built towards, but also very focused in terms of execution. Whether it's a good thing or a bad thing in the corporate world, when you don't execute, the outcome typically is not in your favor. So having to work with teams and influence people in order to get to a strategic goal, whatever that goal is, I've been afforded the opportunity to do that, and I'm very thankful to say that, for the most part, I've been relatively successful. So I believe that those are strengths that I could bring to the board, and a willingness to safeguard.
Thank you, sure.
How would you advocate for the library beyond attending monthly meetings of the trustees?
I'm gonna tell all my friends that, hey, you're not gonna believe this great library. And I've already since bringing my granddaughter and, and kinda as I shared, that rekindling of the spirit. And I work in the Cambridge area, and so there's a great opportunity there just to network with the people that I work with. And I know this may sound very odd, but because I traveled so long, I didn't really have a connection of a workplace and a group of people that I saw on a regular basis. And it's been this really big shift for me. It sounds very elementary, but it's actually very profound at the influence that you can have with the work family. So I, and I don't enter into things lightly. You know, I've been since transitioning away from all that weekly travel. I've been looking for a way that I could give back to the community. And I wanted to be very selective because I knew that I had to believe in it to really stay the course and be committed to it. So if I have the privilege of joining the board, my voice will be loud, but in my way, right? I'm not a billboard kinda girl, so.
What do you see as the mission of the public library?
Wow, that's a great question. If I had to boil it down to one word, I would say access. And to me, that means access to knowledge, access to community, access to services, and access to dreams and to hopes. You know, when I was a kid, I could be anybody I wanted. I just went to the library and found the book of what I wanted to be. So to me, it would be about access and to ensure that, regardless of your status in the community, that you have access.
If appointed, would you consider running for library trustee in the next town election, which would be in November of 2021?
I'm certainly very open to it. You know, obviously, this has to be the right fit for me and the right fit for the board. And all things being equal, i-if that is, then yes. As I said, I kinda thought through the implications that, you know, in my mind, I wouldn't want it to be a one-and-done. Oh, thanks, see ya. You know, that, am I really willing to put roots down and be committed? And the answer is yes.
And that's what we're looking for. Thank you very much for coming in. That's the end of our questions.
May I ask a question or two? Is there time?
Sure.
Okay. So I'm curious, how does the board, does, are there like certain areas that, oh, this board member is in charge of this, and this person takes on this, or is it all a collective?
We have positions, like I chair the board, I run the meetings, and attend budget meetings with the town and things like that. Maybe it's the treasurer. But as far as subcommittees, yeah, we haven't had a subcommittee in a while.
No.
But we all serve on the strategic planning committee.
Okay.
And, you know, I guess the library recently celebrated its 150th.
Yes.
And a couple of us took a lead role in trying to fundraise for that event and make that a success. You know, so it, it, you can sort of take your interests and do as much or as little. It's, you know, it's kind of up to you.
Okay. And one final question. I'm curious as to what you all believe the candidate needs to have to be successful.
For myself, I think that's, this is part of that process. And we're going to see a total of 13 candidates. And after those interviews, we'll sit down and try to find the right candidate. You know, a lot of us, I should say, all of us come from a little bit of different background.
Right.
And also in terms of whether it's work, or how long we've lived here, or whatever other involvements are. So I think that we would probably sit down and give everyone the right, I would say, approach, but the right consideration in terms of making that selection.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else? Well, I appreciate your time very much.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming in.
Thanks for your interest.
Yes.
Thanks for giving us a turn. That was magnanimous of you.
Yeah, I'm...
I meddled my way through running and starting a couple of companies. I didn't have clear ideas like that. Although my daughter-in-law is for something called the Consensus Building Institute. Does.
Anyone notice the scrum on Heather's resume there?
No, that's what we should have said.
We're looking for somebody who can get agile.
Sorry.
That's on the jigsaw.
Twenty-six, twenty-five, eighteen.
How many?
It's still a sixty-two percent reporter?
No, there's a few more.
Okay. The problem that they're having is that they have to build a new reporting out code, basically, because the, for some reason, the program wasn't collecting all the data and everything properly. So it's just like bad code.
There's still sixty-two percent.
Yeah, we'll go from sixty-two. They'll get it all once, once they build the new code, yeah. It's really dumb. Paper ballots. We should just use paper ballots. We should just, we should go back to beans. You can do black balls and white balls, and that'd be funny.
I heard the story that one of the guys...
The better one, Dan, is...
Yeah, that's right. Like the colosseum. We should just flip them out with the lions and just see who makes it. Then my money's on Biden, honestly.
One of the guys who, I guess runs one of the biggest precincts in the area, said last Friday, he figured out this wasn't gonna work. So he told all of his people, because he managed a whole bunch of caucuses, to phone in the results. But the headquarters wasn't taking phone calls. So he had them photograph the results with their cell phones and go over it. And the headquarters wasn't opening the door.
Roger Laan did that for the Warren campaign. They photographed every result as it came in, because they were tallied in the precincts. So they had records of like every precinct's tally before it got entered in. They just...
Where did you hear that?
He tweeted about it. Yeah, he said, you know, "We collected all this, we handed it over to the Iowa Democratic Party, so they have our, our data." But I'm sure they wanna verify it, because otherwise, I got a hundred percent. I don't know. It was just a really good caucus in every precinct. Look, we have photo evidence.
Well, there's three, I guess, I know Nevada is one, but there's two other caucuses, or three other caucus states.
Yeah.
And I don't know if they're using the same formula.
Nevada just said that they're not gonna use it, actually. It's funny. Yeah, so at least they learned.
They're reacting.
I have a feeling though Iowa's gonna get pushed back in the future in terms of where it is in the process, due to this and even the overall, how, does it really represent the country as well as some other states might?
Yeah, everyone is unanimous tonight that there's not gonna be a first-in-country Iowa caucus next election.
State law.
But you know what? You don't have to run. That would be the other solution.
Well, the, one thing that was suggested, if the DNC wanted to change, is there is a state law in Iowa that they have to schedule their caucuses before, some amount of time before the next one. And it was suggested that the DNC could penalize candidates who run in the caucus by like omitting them from the next debate or something like that. That would be fairly significant intervention by the DNC, but it's possible.
Well, who was it who made the changes within the caucus format? Was it not the DNC?
No, it would have been the Iowa Democratic Party.
I mean, there was something I had heard that the major newspaper had done a poll, which Sanders was comfortably in front, and then they kind of pulled and didn't publicize the poll.
I think there was something wrong with the way they asked the questions. At least the Buttigieg campaign said that he was left off in some of the question there, so they kinda contested it. They didn't wanna publish it while it was being contested, whether or not it was valid or not.
And then there's that ranked, you know, even, even if you look at the polling, but then, once you're in the room, it's like, people are moving around, and as they get knocked off, it's like all the Yang supporters go to Biden or whatever. I don't know. I don't know where people check out, but it does change a lot. It's interesting.
I caucused in Maine when John Kerry was running and Howard Dean. Yeah, with that 2004. And it was quite a process. Like, I dragged Evan that night. He's not real political. And he didn't realize what he was getting into. But I remember, he was in the Kerry group and I was in the Dean group, of course.
I was divided.
I heard Warren's campaign offered childcare on-site, which made sense. I can't imagine if you have young kids at home, like hired to go and stay there until 10, 11 o'clock at night, or even people who have jobs or people with disabilities. I think it makes it a lot harder as opposed to just going to the ballot box and being there for a few minutes and then leaving.
Again, it's insane to have it on Monday nights. It's like having elections on Tuesdays. You know, there are a lot of countries I know where they do that on the weekend.
Yeah, but Tuesday was the market day. That's why, that's actually how this...
Is that right?
Yeah, yeah, that's how they decided. Because everybody had to go into town for the market anyway, so they figured, all right, Tuesdays are there.
That was what, seventeen eighty?
Yeah, yeah, but they were infallible founders. The framers...
All the places you're talking about are Europe. We were not Europe.
That should be our tagline. Not Europe. Say what you will.
Well, some people are talking about trying to actually make it a holiday, even having, at least keep it on Tuesdays, have a Tuesday holiday, so it makes it a lot easier for people who have access to actually vote, but we'll see.
It is what it is, you know?
There's no holidays anymore, you know? It's like holidays are probably increased turnout among people with office jobs, but if you work at Dunkin' Donuts, there's no holidays.
Yeah.
It's just tough, making that, making it accessible to everybody.
And office workers, you know, often go away on holidays.
Yeah, true.
Yeah, they make it a long weekend.
In, I think it's Australia, they, they fine you in your taxes if you don't vote.
Well, we should do that.
No kidding?
I believe so.
It's a bold test.
Don't quote me on it, but I'm on the record. For millions watching at home.
I feel like things have gotten better, though, when it comes to absentee voting and stuff like that. I know even the primary here, there's could be, like, could vote a few weeks beforehand to actually happen, so I think it's very helpful for people.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I voted ahead in November, you know?
But it's also your right not to vote.
And these days, we don't have Boss Hogg running around, gathering up people, paying them, paying them a nickel to vote their way.
I rereading a book that came out a long time ago, written by a former professor from the University of Chicago, University of Illinois in Chicago. And the book is called, "We Don't Want Nobody Nobody Sent." And what happened is that this professor, I'm sorry, there was another professor who had gone to his local Warren Democratic Committee office in Chicago, in the neighborhood he lived in. And he said, "I'd like to help volunteer, you know, regarding the statewide race." And they said, didn't, didn't ever ask him his name, said, "Who sent you?" He said, "No one sent me. I live down the street. There's the office. I wanted to come by." He said, "We don't want nobody nobody sent."
That's the old daily machine, right?
This reminds me of prom night, waiting for your date.
I think we probably only need 10 minutes to do weeks.
Yeah.
Yeah. I have all these interesting questions to ask.
That's democracy. We don't want any questions. Just want answers.
From this guy, Jared Knowles, who is his last, and was, I guess, moved, yeah. He, he's, he works for a company where he's president. And he became president in the last year, if you read this. So the question is, did he found the company? But we're not allowed to ask that.
His, um-
He didn't say that.
Cover letter says, "Before building my business." I, I started it. Yeah, I successfully built the business.
I guess I missed that.
He started as a breadwinner. But it could be like Harrison Ford. You know how Harrison Ford got the Star Wars gig? He was a carpenter on set.
Really?
Yeah, yeah.
I knew he was a carpenter. I didn't know anybody was on the set.
No, they had him stand, they needed somebody to play solo opposite. And they said, "Well, here, why don't you, you're an actor, right? Why don't you come and stand in?" And then they gave it to him.
Good choice. Thank you.
It's a ghost offer.
All right. You ready?
All right.
Thank you.
It went perfectly good. I just didn't have time to finish it.
Yeah, I know. I had the same issue this month.
My daughter's obsessed with the Nutcracker, so I spend a lot of my evenings doing ballet.
Is she doing ballet or just interested in?
We turned her to the Nutcracker at the beginning of December, and she's just been completely obsessed with it. I can't believe how long it's stuck, actually.
Wow.
How old is she?
She'll be three.
There's some other stuff you could be doing. We could have been running a meeting between the two.
Yeah, I mean, just long in between.
How long do we have in the last?
Yeah, maybe it's the next twenty, ten minutes. Yeah, we'll have to talk.
We could do.
You could approve the minutes?
Yeah, let's do that.
So there's your sitting, yeah.
Makes sense.
That last set of minutes is-
Who are the oppositions?
And any, yeah, any corrections?
Any corrections?
Any corrections?
Last one, nothing.
Under financial report, second paragraph, Mr. Hanlon required into the trustee discretion items on the funding grant report.
Is there anything else?
Yep, under new business?
Yes.
It's consideration action, it's a strategic planning. So there's one, two, three instances of that. That's all I had. I didn't have any questions. Did anybody else?
We accept the minutes as amended.
I'm second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Have you been in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You in opposed? I have it. Moving on to the financial report.
So this is the seventh month, and we've basically have spent, if I read this right, fifty-four percent of our budget. What I wanted to ask Leon is, in terms of personnel, are we up to snuff in terms of our full-time and part-time positions?
Yes.
And are we in balance, I guess, in terms of electrical and gas?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're easily on track for both of those.
Yeah, and I mentioned the door project is very nearly-
Very close.
Were there any financial surprises with that at all, according to the other?
No, no. The only thing that was, that wasn't specked out by the architects was the drain, or gutter on the rear entrance. The, because the vestibule, the canopy was changed, the vestibule was changed, the water was running right down onto the new foundation and frame. So I brought that up and that was a change order. So basically, there were a few credits and so it was basically washed to get that installed. That's now installed, so really not a lot of surprises. You know, when you, when you work with the low bidder, there's always, there are always challenges, so we're close.
Anyone have any questions regarding the budget report? Could I just move on then to the fund of grants? And I just had a question, well, I saw it further in Leon, you had a request regarding lightbed.
Yes, yep.
I had a question in terms of the Friends of Public Literacy fundraisers.
Project literacy, yep.
And are all those funds used only for, from a teaching point of view, compensate? Or do you tell us?
Yeah, it can be used, it's used for the classes. It's also used for any other number of things that project literacy needs. Hi.
This is super intimidating. I'll start by saying. Wow.
Hi, are you Matthew?
Yes.
I'm Leanne. This is Board of Trustees. And we're excited that you're looking to join us. And so we'll just welcome and we're glad you're here. And glad you're interested in the library and serving on our board. Danielle.
Sure. Just to start, could you tell us a little bit about how to use the library?
Sure. I mainly use it to do printing, scanning. Sometimes if I'm in town and need access to a computer, in Watertown Square, I make use of it. I also withdraw books occasionally. I haven't attended any events, I don't believe, through the Watertown Public Library as of yet. I was actually just there the other day looking through historical records. Haven't done that before, plan on doing it again. I really like maps, so it's pretty cool seeing some of the little maps of what the place looked like back in the early nineteen hundreds. I use the Hatch a little more often than I use Watertown Library, just because I volunteer there every Thursday. And basically, I work there from six until nine PM, helping kids and adults out with various projects that they're working on. Sometimes programming stuff, sometimes legos, messing around with the 3D printers, which are sort of constantly falling apart sadly. Had to fix one of those up about a year ago. Yeah, that's, that's mostly how I use the library.
In your work experience, what do you think that would bring to the Board of Trustees?
I think I said it in the cover letter. I, I have a pretty good ability to work between groups of people. That was my main role that I sort of eventually ended up in at most of my other jobs that I worked. I don't know if you guys know many programmers, but they tend to be sort of awkward individuals. So I found that that was the place that I shined where the rest of them couldn't really. There were, in my last job at Athena, there was a number of times where we'd be interacting with different departments just because we were sort of the data pipelines. So there'd be people upstream of us who were sending data into our system, and then there are people downstream of us receiving our data. So there's a lot of, there are a lot of times where something was going wrong with the data coming in, so we'd have to sort of figure out why that was happening, what one of us was misunderstanding. And then sometimes there'd be people downstream who'd come to us and say, "Hey, what gives? Why are you doing this?" And we would, you know, know that we were doing something wrong, so we'd have to interact with them too to figure out what their requirements were and how we could accommodate that. So there's a lot of sort of explaining our position, how are we receiving the data, and then figuring out how we could work with the other parties to get it to be what their requirements were too. So that was, that was, I think, one of the big roles that I had that I'd be able to make use of. Also, just in general, I know that libraries are, libraries are moving more towards technologically, you know, related places these days. So it would be useful for me to have my computer knowledge, my programming knowledge, just to understand the sort of software issues that can go wrong. I know that the collection of computers you have is one of the large things that people are drawn to here. So just understanding the problems that can go wrong. Like, I heard recently you guys, you guys were having to upgrade to Windows 10. And I know that's quite a debacle if you don't do it carefully. So like, just understanding what that process would look like, I think I could help with that.
Besides Hatch that you just described, that you described in your, what other involvement do you have in the community or any other contacts you may have through the community?
So most of my involvement isn't with town government roles. I interact with a lot of the restaurants around just because I go to eat around Watertown a lot. So I know a lot of the owners and, you know, waitresses and folks around the community. And I have a number of different, like, small social groups that I interact with. But I wouldn't say that I have much involvement in Watertown government as of yet. And that's something I really want to change. That's something I'm really looking to change in the near future. I've been trying to get involved in more states and higher government lately. I don't know if you saw my resume, I've been working with the Markey campaign, just doing phone banking at this point, trying to get more involved in their data side. And also working with the Sanders campaign up in New Hampshire right now. And also looking to get involved with the Avon Kloss campaign, I think his name is, Oshin Kloss. He's running for Ted Kennedy's representative seat. So those are the sort of ways that I'm working with the community right now.
Thank you.
I'm pretty busy.
Yeah, yeah.
Later this year, the trustees will be approving a five-year strategic plan for the library. And so in addition to our meetings, monthly meetings on Tuesdays, we'll be having a Wednesday meeting on the third Wednesday of each month, where we'll be discussing survey results, just goals for the library, outlining a strategic plan. So I just wanted to ask, if you were appointed to the board, would you be able to attend a Wednesday meeting?
Yes, what time?
Seven o'clock. And then how would your voice and skill set advance our planning process?
I think I would be able to hopefully work with those surveys to sort of distill that information into possible actions we could take, definitely. I don't, where are those surveys coming from?
Survey Monkey, we're using Survey Monkey. But it's out to the whole community.
Yeah, I mean, that would be one of the things I'd be looking to do. Obviously, I'd be interested in advocating for Hatch's situation the next five years, especially trying to find a more permanent location. That's, that's pretty important to me.
High priority.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. But yeah, I think I would be trying to understand what the community needs are in order to try to help get us along in that direction.
Matt, how would you advocate for the library beyond attending monthly meetings with the Board of Trustees?
I mean, I would continue to volunteer, certainly. I, I think I do need to make it a higher priority to come over to the library more often in terms of just withdrawing books. Actually, I have a book that I have on hold for me right now that I just remembered that I need to make sure to actually pick up. I don't know, is it still?
We're still open.
Point you don't own, man.
No, it's on hold. I don't think I own anything. What was the question again?
How would you advocate for the library beyond attending monthly meetings with the Board of Trustees?
Yeah, I think I would, I would like to continue helping out Hatch. I think I'd be willing to do some volunteering for the library as well, especially in the archive section. And again, super interested in trying to help out there. And also I heard that, I've talked to a few of the employees around, and they said that that was one of the areas that they were really interested in getting more involvement in. That I think you're looking for some sort of part-time person to help out in the archives. So I would love to continue organizing that and see if we could find any interesting new gems. Yeah, I think volunteering would probably be the most likely way to be helpful.
Thank you.
What do you see as the mission of the public library?
The mission of the public library? I think it's something that needs to be fluid, or it needs to take fluidity into the definition. I think in the past it was mainly in order to provide books, obviously, but we can see that that's definitely changing. I think it needs to be a place where groups of people can gather together. I mean, you have that with Hatch, in order to learn or create. I think it needs to be a place where people who don't have all of their needs fulfilled, people who, you know, don't have access to a computer perhaps, or, you know, are trying to further themselves. It needs to be a place for them to continue strengthening themselves. I mean, it also needs to be an archive, right? It needs to be a place where you're storing your community's knowledge. I think those are the main things that I see the library's mission as. And again, I think it could change in the future. Yeah, I think we need to be very open to the possibility of changing with the times. Pretty excited to see video games, for instance, showing up in the library. It's another, it's another media type that people can consume in that maybe people don't have the money to access more of them, so.
It's a popular collection.
I'm sure, I'm sure. There's some good stuff in there.
If appointed, would you consider running for library trustee in the next election?
Definitely.
Okay. And just to be clear, it's, it would be two years from now.
Twenty twenty-one?
The town of Dayton, Watertown Public Library will be closing in forty minutes at nine o'clock.
So I got thirty minutes to get that book. What is, I don't actually know much about the process for, for running for that position. I assume I'd have to collect signatures for surveys?
Starting in around May of the election year, you know, get your signature lists and get them filled out. You have to collect signatures from the different districts.
Okay, yeah, some portion from each of the different districts.
I do agree. It was not a glamorous process.
It's much easier collecting signatures for yourself than it is for candidates. More than knocking on doors for candidates.
Yeah, that sounds a little rough, a little scary. Though I've been knocking on doors a bunch for Bernie lately, so getting this-
He'll be old pat on it. So, yeah, that's the end of our questions. So if you don't have any questions for us, we can just let you know we're interviewing a bunch of people tonight and a few more a couple weeks from now. Later on this month, there's when we're making the decision.
Great. I don't think I have any questions right now, but is there someone I can shoot messages to if I have?
Yeah, you can, you can let me know and I'll-
You're the one I was talking to, right? You're Director Paul?
But she won't scream them. She'll send them out. I think.
Jared is here.
Jared.
Hi Jared.
Hello.
Right here.
Right here.
Yep. Yes, I was speaking.
Come on.
Welcome Jared, I'm Leanne and this is the, the other members of the board. I'm Matt Shep, President, President of the House today. Thank you for your application. I've seen a lot of great applicants. I'll turn it over to Jared for the first question.
Sure, so just to start, could you tell us a little bit about how you use the library?
Sure. First, thanks for squeezing me in at the end of your meeting. I really appreciate the flexibility because keeping you here a little longer, I understand. Yeah, I use the library a lot actually for my work. So I'm a small business owner. I run a data science consulting company. And a lot of times I have customers who have a topic that they, you know, I'm not as familiar with. So I can request the book and come pick it up. That's one way I use the library. I come here a lot on the weekends to work, get some quiet place to work, get out of the office. I don't like going to a coffee shop and just sitting in a coffee shop. I like being in the library more. I use the, I use the Makerspace a couple times once to fix my keyboard on my computer, which was really great, a convenient thing to have instead of buying the tools. So I think I use, in all kinds of ways. I also participated in one of the democracy talks, which was really a great thing to get together with some fellow residents and we talked about a book that we all read. And I thought that was a really kind of interesting and novel thing to do right here in this room.
Thank you.
Yeah.
What do you think in your work experience, what do you think your work experience would bring to the Board of Trustees?
So I think maybe the most relevant thing is that I was a government budget analyst for six years. I worked in, in a government state agency in Wisconsin. But I was a budget analyst on and off. When things were really tough, I would often get drafted in to be a budget analyst. And I learned a lot about setting budgets and setting targets and also, also the more important part of budget planning, which is like thinking about actually the needs of the community or the people you're serving and how does your budget actually reflect those things? So I think that's a real skill that I bring. I also do a lot of demographic projections and sort of social science prediction for a lot of my customers, help them do strategic planning, like a school district are a lot of my clients. I have school districts plan for growth or decline in some cases and whether they, how do they manage that? So I'm pretty familiar with the techniques that can be used to do that. And then I think that I'm very used to, and I'm a very strongly committed to democracy, which means like not just we vote, but also that we listen and we make decisions as a community. So the loudest or the most agitated voice may not be the most important voice to hear, but we have to think about how are we getting everybody's voice involved? And so I think bringing that as some other asset that I have.
Could you describe any other potential involvement within the community or any other contacts within the community?
Sure, so I made a goal for myself since I'm new, new to the community that I really wanted to get involved. When I moved to Watertown, I really kind of decided I really liked the, like the feel of this place and the people here. And coming to the library was maybe the first place I met people. So first thing I did was volunteer to be on the Strategic Planning Committee. And then I learned I was in a community that cares so much that you got so many applicants that, you know, it's hard to do it. So that's a great sign, right?
Maybe that.
Yeah, so that's great. And then I also participated in the arts, public arts planning committee because I'm really passionate about public art. And I think that's something that Watertown could really grow and improve on. And it would make it a really great, it's like a great environment for more public art. So that's been something that I've been trying to participate in more. And then I'm planning because I'm very interested in local government and always have been. I'm just working on my schedule so that I could come to city hall meetings more commonly just to be more involved in, in just seeing what's going on. And, you know, I follow the news and I'm interested in what's happening, like new schools coming in, new roads. Like there's a lot of change happening in Watertown and it seems pretty thoughtful and planned. And I just think being plugged in and listening to how that's going. As a new resident, I don't feel strong enough to say, oh, I think you should put, you know, exactly this street light in front of my house because that's what I want. It's more of learning and seeing what, what's sort of happening right now.
Thank you.
Thanks. You mentioned that strategic planning is something that you've had some experience in. And this year we're actually creating a strategic plan for the library, a five-year strategic plan. And as part of that process, the trustees will be meeting with a committee, a strategic planning committee, once a month. So in addition to our first Tuesday of the month meeting, we'll meet on the third Wednesday of the month, the next six months. So I wanted to first see if that's a night that you would be able to attend with us.
Yes.
If you were appointed. And also what would you bring to the process as far as your voice and your skill set?
So I think I would say I don't know what I would bring in terms of what the community's needs are, except I could give you a very good overview of the data, right? So I could tell you at the sort of census level, like what does Watertown look like and how does it compare? And I can present that in a way that could be very helpful, like you might hire a consultant to do in that process. That's who I am, I am that consultant sometimes. But I think I also would bring sort of the ability to sort of think strategically about who we have at those meetings and how we're making sure we balance all of the competing concerns. So that's something I work with a lot with school districts is, school districts often struggle to get this parents of the students who they serve who are busy and working. And sometimes they work in evenings to come and raise their voice. So schools have to be very strategic. How do we get those voices? And then if someone is a busy parent and they have five minutes and they write down something, do we make sure we weigh that just as much as we might weigh somebody else who has a lot of time and energy and cares, but they don't have a kid in the school? Like how do you balance those different voices and priorities? And so thinking that through strategically is something else I could be helpful with, I think.
Thank you.
Please tell us how you would advocate for the library beyond attending monthly meetings with the board trustees?
Yeah, I'd tell everyone who I know who lives in Watertown about how great the library is. A friend of mine just moved to Watertown and I told him about the Makerspace. And then we went to the Makerspace together and then we started going a couple of times. And we, we, you know, go there, fix our computers and then we grab a bite to eat down the street and then head back to his house. And that's just like a great timeout. So I think that's on the micro level, I think that's something that I do. I think also I would be very proud to be on the board. So I think I would make, you know, whatever my public profile is for my business and stuff, I would want to say, you know, this, this is something that I think is important, participating in your community, being part of the library. And so I think that's another way that I would make it heard and try to advocate for people to use the library more.
Thank you.
What do you see as the mission of the public library?
Oh, that's a big question. Probably people write dissertations about the mission of the library. You know, I, I, I'm sort of, I guess I like the, what I've always admired about libraries is sort of the idea. I think librarians are sort of the original, what people think of as the sort of Silicon Valley radical, make information free. Like librarians have been talking about making information accessible and free for way longer than the people have cared about San Francisco, right? So I think the idea that making things accessible to the public and then being a place in the community where people can go to get help. I mean, just, you know, any kind of problem that you have, you can go to the library and librarians are there to make sure you can get information, get resources that you need. And sort of being that focal point in a community, I think, especially now. I think communities are struggling to kind of have that center anymore. And I think libraries have a big opportunity to be that center. I, I think the Watertown library is already doing a really good job, right? It's gravity drew me in as a new resident right away. And so I think just that, that's sort of the role I think they have to play now is this place that brings people in and makes people feel like this is both a community and a place you can get the resources you need to sort of do whatever you want to do or achieve as a person.
Thank you. And if appointed, would you consider running for library trustee in the next election in November?
Yeah, I would consider it. I think I would, I, my only hesitation is running for a public office is not something I sort of ever saw myself doing. But, you know, it's a great position and a great opportunity. So I would consider, you know, really being willing to run. If, if, if I felt like I was doing a good job, if I had good rapport with the other trustees, it seemed like I was serving the community well, I think I would strongly consider it in that case.
That's the end of our questions. So our next step in the process is to interview another group of candidates in a couple weeks. And then we'll make a decision after that, so.
Great.
And if you have any questions, I'll have to take a point out for you.
Okay, great. It was great to meet you all.
Thank you so much. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good evening.
You too.
Thanks for coming, Mark.
My job is done for this evening. Thank you.
Much pleasure.
See you later this month.
See you in a couple of weeks, if not before.
You know, right on top. It's quarter up.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, so we can, we had started to go through our agenda during some of the gap. So we're on the financial report, so. We're going to move on.
I got another question for, for, regarding the Hatch financials.
Yes.
I'm looking and it was a available balance of just under $9,000. I was wondering if you could, I wonder if you could tell us how that money might be spent? If that's the case, does it get spent back into the Hatch program or?
So everything that's in the town budget line will be spent. A lot of that goes to our laser cutter maintenance. The filters are really expensive, so that's a big chunk of the equipment maintenance. Everything else should be spent for the town budget for sure. The community foundation grant will be spent down and we'll apply for another one. The building committee, I mean, pretty much everything will, will be spent down because we need all the money we can get.
And we were saying spent down in sort of time period, is it?
So the town budget is all on the fiscal year. The other stuff is not on a town, on a budget. Oh, well, the, the community foundation grant is, but we only have $20 left in that anyway. The building committee and special gifts are not time sensitive, but I anticipate we will use that all for programs and supplies.
Did anyone else have any questions regarding the financials?
Do we have a motion to accept the financial report?
Make a motion to accept the financial report?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Are you opposed? Here we go.
Thank you.
The motion's passed.
Caitlin, since we mentioned Hatch, we should tell you that almost everyone in here is a Hatch user.
Yeah.
Like, that's marketing.
Yeah. Good.
We skipped public forums, so.
Oh, I'm sorry, did I, you were going to make this as part of your?
Yes.
Budget, I'm sorry, okay.
Okay, but seeing no one, staying with this one. And then we decided to table the Red Leaf Cafe update. So now we can move on to the chairman's report. And I just wanted to give an update on the CPA process that the town is going through. I attended the, the public meeting last week and Shep was there and Leon.
Good evening, everyone. The time is eight forty-five. The library is closing in sixteen minutes at nine o'clock. Thank you, have a great day.
So it was a very informative meeting and we got some idea of the process and the timeline for, for the CPA informing the priorities of the town as far as spending that money. As you probably know, there's going to be quite a fund of money that's going to be able to be spent on different areas of conservation, outdoor recreation, open space, affordable housing and historic preservation. And that's where I think the library could have some projects that we could seek funding. So I just wanted to get it on the board's mind and, and encourage board members to go on to the CPC website and, and take their survey for what people think is a good use of the CPA funds.
Can I add to that? There, there are places around the room where people could put up on stickers what they thought were good ideas. And at one place it was saying, turn the police station into part of the library. And where a number of us put stars on that one. But that will be in the survey if you go online. So if your inclination is to encourage that, that's a good place to do it.
Definitely. Ten percent of all the funds each year go to historic preservation, whether they use it in that year or they, they set it aside for another year. It's always going to be ten percent of the funds and it could be even more, so.
Was, was there an estimate in terms of what the first year of funding might be?
They estimate that they're going to have another public meeting about this to get input from the town. And then this summer they'll be writing a plan. And then as soon as the fall, maybe beginning of next year, I think is when they'll start seeking applications for.
Do you remember how much total money was available? I want to say five million, but is that right?
Yeah, that's, that's my recollection.
It's about two million a year.
Because that's what's key. I, I follow, I follow Boston's a little bit. And obviously it's a much greater circumstance. But, you know, they've tried to divide it out so they're touching different community groups, different neighborhoods, different community groups and needs. Again, it's community preservation, so they're trying to, you know, if there was work to be done, say, in the old building, let's say you had to replace the windows, that would be a good grant to write.
And I was surprised because when I thought of historic preservation, I was thinking of historic buildings, maybe sites, bridges, but it's properties, so archiving, you know. If you have like, I was thinking of our clock that we moved over from the old building. That sort of a project, sort of, you know, maybe having anything like that, so. Just good to think about in the next year or so because there's going to be a lot of movement. And then the other thing, my report is the FY twenty-one budget update. Leon and Caitlin and I attended the initial meeting with Mike Driscoll and Tom Tracy last week. And it went well. We, they were receptive to the, you know, they seemed interested in, in the requests that we made, especially with the archivist and the outreach librarian. They had some questions for Leon, which she has gone back and given me the answers. So I think we're, it's a good start to our budget process.
What's that meeting you went to again?
It was the initial budget meeting with the town. And we met with Mike Driscoll and Tom Tracy. The other thing that came up at the meeting was the MAR. And the fact that they had asked about how the building, how the library building budget will be part of the town's building. And I think there was some resolution on that today, right? You sent to me?
Right, so if we, so the Department of Public Buildings has taken over maintenance services for the library. And currently they are spending money for maintenance things from our budget. But there's interest in just transferring the money to the Department of Public Buildings budget. And because we have to meet the MAR every year and that's a 1.25% increase over what previous three years average, they didn't want to do that. We don't want them to do that if it's going to cause us any problems. So we contacted the Board of Library Commissioners and they said they can make an adjustment to the MAR. We just need to tell them what those budget figures are for those particular line items over the last three fiscal years and that, and that they would make that adjustment. So we'll have to see how the town wants to move forward with that.
And that wouldn't jeopardize anything.
And that won't jeopardize our MAR calculation.
Of course, if they move forward with the police station, then we'd become the permanent home of Hatch. That's probably solved both problems. Wait, Mark?
We did bring up the police station at the, at the meeting as well and put her on, as I say. And I haven't forgotten about the letter of notice, I just sort of tabled it. And I haven't forgotten about the letter, and I just sort of tabled it, because I figured this would be a long meeting without taking that into consideration. So that's it, Tony, so I can move on to the director's report.
Okay, great. So a couple of big things tonight that I want to bring up. First is the request to declare Six Max maps as surplus property and offer them for sale. So I gave you a memo in the packet that details what the maps are. And as you know, we have spent a lot of money on preserving the Watertown and Middlesex County maps that we have. And they turned out great. There's some here in the hallway, and there's one upstairs. But we have six maps that are in the collection that don't relate to Watertown. And some are in okay shape, some are in terrible shape, and in need of conservation or preservation. So what my recommendation is, is that they be withdrawn from the collection and that we offer them for sale so that they get to an individual or institution that would be able to take care of them in the way that they, that they should be taken care of. So I have been in touch with purchasing department, the town attorney, and the town auditor. The purchasing department would handle this whole process. And the parameters that I wrote in my memo were approved by her, recommended by her. And then I worked with the town attorney on, you know, what, is it legal for the board to do this? And the answer is yes, because you are, you know, the custody of the property of the library. And then the town auditor, working with him on what account that this money would go into, and that we would have full control over that money. So all of those ducks are in a row now. The parameters would be that they would be sold via sealed bid. The award would be the highest to the highest, most responsible and responsive bidder. They would be advertised according to Massachusetts law for a two-week period. We would have a afternoon in which interested bidders would be able to view the maps. The purchasing department would require a 33% bid deposit along with a bank letter. We would also require that a letter, that would show the bidder be open to making these maps available to the public directly or via resale to an institution. We would want to sell the maps as one lot, and we would want a minimum bid of $50,000. And we would want the maps to be picked up within three business days after the bid award. So those, and then you have a description of each of the maps. So it's my recommendation that the board move to declare these surplus and offer them for sale.
Could I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Who would the purchasing agent try to attract?
Well, she has certain places where she has to advertise, like in the TAB, and then in the bulletin of goods and services for the town.
But wouldn't she try to go through, I don't know, there must be somebody else there who's in the map business, historical business?
Yes.
Would she be?
And I have those contacts, and I would send those along. Yeah.
Have you had any informal approvals of these maps by Kenny or anybody like that?
I can recommend someone, so I've had some conversations.
So your price is based sort of on those conversations?
And did you check with the historic commission? Did they come and see the maps?
Historical Society?
Yeah.
I did email the Historical Society. You saw the email that went out.
Yes, I did. I just wanted to know if they.
They didn't flag anything. They didn't have any interest. They didn't raise any of those questions.
Okay, great.
I guess I'd make a motion then, that we go forward with this project. Second?
Motion has been made to, to.
Declare the six maps.
Declare the six maps, yeah, as surplus property and offer them for sale. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Great, thank you. Next up is the Library of Things proposal. This has been a long time in coming, and I know some of you are interested in this. A lot of people in the community also are interested in this. So here's our proposal. We selected the items listed here for our opening collection based on feedback from library patrons and review of items that other local libraries offer. So what you have in front of you is the list, and also what you have in my memo is a request for $6,700 from Lake Meg. That would allow us to buy the items that are in this list, along with how we're going to store them, package them, and then a cushion for, you know, I'm thinking this is a year-long project right here. It would allow us to replace or repair any items, also to add anything that would come up that people would be really interested in. So first of all, the request for the money, and then a vote on a policy in anticipation of, you know, the approval of the request for the $6,700.
How did you identify the, I mean, I know it's from patron responsibility. Did that come into the survey, or just from?
We did a Facebook.
Oh, you did a simple one, okay.
Informal survey.
Okay. Yeah. I mean, it's a great list.
Parrot Square.
Oh, that's right, Parrot Square.
Okay, yeah. It's a great list. There's a lot of really interesting stuff. Some things, you know, like hotspots, which I've heard also are a great resource. But some things I never would have thought. I'd like a burger watching kit, which is something I'm going to take out.
What, you made the motion then?
I made a motion to, we have to start with the budget, is that right?
Yeah. Actually, can I ask one question? As far as, like, where is this stuff going to be stored? And how will it be, like, after someone takes out, say, the circular saw and it comes back, will there be somebody on the staff who can kind of assess that the circular saw is in good working order? You know, like, how, how does?
Yeah, I mean, we're going to find our way on this. So in the staff hallway, we've taken out some cabinets, so that's going to be where we're going to store everything. So it's just, like, right around the corner from the back of the circulation department. So we're going to have a catalog that people can look through in order to choose these. They'll also be, you know, on our website. But yes, it, there are going to, there's going to be a list that goes out with this. Take the circular saw out in a Tupperware container, a storage container. There's going to be a list of all the items that you are responsible for keeping in good working order and returning. And then the staff will assess it when it comes back.
Okay. And for something like that, there's, there's someone on the staff that's familiar with the circuit?
Well, no, there isn't, but, okay, all right. It'll be fine.
Okay.
I have a question, just. You probably don't know. I've been involved in construction over the last 40 years. Just went through another phase. And my architect's son-in-law just told me that he's got a stud finder that really works. Now, over 40 years, I've had four stud finders that don't really work, and they all cost about $16. If I can locate one that really does work, can I just give it to the library and have it put in this?
Sure, that'd be great.
Okay, because with books, you can't give one, right? But this falls out of that.
Yeah, no, that would be great.
And I assume these won't be part of interlibrary loan?
No, they won't.
How do we, how do we manage that, like, on the website? Because that's all part of it?
Right, no, we, we will say on our website that these are for Watertown residents only.
There are codes that, like, wouldn't allow it to be. And we've done some of this before, right? I mean, because we have other gadgets that we.
We do.
We lend, like, the GoPro, the telescope. Has everything gone fine with that? Is it, is it similar, like, seven days? And then, you know, how did, what happens if they don't bring it back, like?
Yeah, it's a little different in that, you know, you haven't been able to reserve it for a particular day. It's just when it becomes available, they'll let you know. But this, we're going to revamp that, because you don't want to borrow a folding table just whenever it comes back. You're having a party, you know.
Call the neighbors.
So, yeah, that's, that'll be a little different. And it's going to be, you know, hopefully people will return things on time so that the next person can have it for their party.
Yeah. And I suppose you take, you know, contact, there'll be a way to contact them. And is there somebody that, in circulation, that will give a call to people? Yeah. Then as far as the indemnification form.
Yep.
And waiver, is that something that you've discussed with the?
Town attorney, we sent a draft. He sent back some edits, and this is the result of that. And then you have the, the policy which you would be voting on in addition to the, to the budget.
All right. So are there other questions from the library? Do we have a motion to request money from, money be transferred from Lake Meg in the amount of $6,700?
Make a motion to transfer the $6,700 to Lake Meg?
Transfer from where just today?
Lake Meg, Lake slash Meg.
Second motion?
Favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Make a motion that we accept the policy as presented to us regarding the Library of Things.
So a motion has been made to accept the Library of Things policy, the draft policy.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Great, thank you. I'm going to be excited about this.
Yeah, it's exciting. It's great work. I remember I talked to Natasha one day, and I said, I thought a label maker would be a good thing. Some people, you know, like, I was, at the time, my kids were heading off to camp, and it's like, you want to label everything. So I was back for that. Yeah. Old business. Do we have any old business to? New business, we already dealt with, the library trustee interviews, request for information? Why don't we go around, Daniel?
Nothing for me.
Nope, all set.
All set.
All set. And then date of the next meeting?
About February 19th for the interviews and planning, strategic planning meeting.
Okay.
And that's at 5:30?
Yes. Yes, and then strategic findings at 7:00 or whenever the interviews.
Right. Yep.
But we're in a March meeting?
Well, we can tell people that it's at 7:15 or 7:30. So should we say 10 minutes between, do you think, for this, for that group?
Yeah, I'm thinking 10 minutes will do it, because, I mean, that's about what each of them.
So that's six people. So what's that math on that?
One hour?
One hour.
So it's only till 6:30, and then you'll have a half hour to deliberate and choose? How does that sound? And then so start the meeting at 7:00? Strategic planning meeting at 7:00? Okay.
Let's do that, and we'll set the next meeting day on the 19th. The first Tuesday.
First Tuesday. When is that in March?
It's usually the same.
Yeah, there's Lake here, huh?
Oh, there is.
Oh, that's right.
Is there 29 days in?
There is.
20, 20, maybe the second floor.
Ian's got her tone up.
Yeah, I turned it up, so. So I'm waiting for it.
So who's got the date?
Question.
March 3?
March 3.
So March 3 is the board meeting. And the other is February 19th at 5:30?
5:30.
Can we meet here?
No, we're going to be in the Strangor.
March 19th.
February 19th.
February 19th, yep.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn. Second?
Favor?
Aye.
I have it. Thanks, everyone.
Thanks, everyone.